Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Burroville School Committee meeting, September 12th, 2023. We're at the Burroville High School Media Center, 425 East Avenue, Harrisville, Rhode Island. And we'll begin by convening an open session and a welcome. Roll call, we have one person absent, that is Victor Bevelacqua, and he will be a little late. And we'll start by our pledge of allegiance. We have a flag there and a flag here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to suspend part of the meeting, and we'll begin with a wonderful thing, a recognition, Dr. Salito, the 2024 Superintendent of the Year. And I'm going to start with...
Thank you so much for being here. On behalf of our school committee and our Burroville Administrative Leadership Team, we want to thank you all for coming out to celebrate this very special occasion with us and sharing in our Bronco pride. And so, without further ado, I'd like to ask our representatives from RISA to come up, Larry Filippelli and Janine Adamasi, to present to Dr. Salito.
It is an honor to be here, along with Janine, to represent Rhode Island School Superintendents Association, to honor Dr. Michael Salito. I first met Mike in 2008, when he interviewed for the position of high school principal in Situate. I was the middle school principal back then, and he and I have enjoyed a long friendship and career over the last 15 years, working together as central office administrators, and then leaving together as central office administrators. And Mike came to you, and I went to Lincoln, and we still retained our friendship. Mike is one of the state's most outstanding educational leaders. His contributions to the Superintendents Association have been many, but in particular, the guidance that he was able to give us with everything that had to do with athletics, not only throughout COVID, but any time one of our fellow superintendent needs it, has been unmatched. And Mike, we wish you sincere congratulations. You have many friends in this room. It's a well-deserved honor, and we wish you the best and congratulations on being named the 2024 Rhode Island Superintendent of the Year. Congratulations, Mike.
It's a trip to Bermuda? Thank you, everyone. I just want to say a few words. First off, I'm humbled and honored to be selected as the 2024 Superintendent of the Year, following Dr. Filippelli, who was awarded the 2023 Superintendent of the Year, and then Janine, the 2022, the year before. So, really humbled and honored that they're both here to present the award to me tonight. I just want to start by thanking a few folks. I think, as we all know, being a school administrator is a 24/7 job that often pulls you away from your family, so I want to thank my wife Jennifer, who's here, my kids Nicholas, Christina, and Michael, who are here as well. And, you know, I appreciate all the love and support through the years and everything that you've done to support me. To my colleagues, superintendents, some of which are here today, your support, your guidance and advice throughout the years has been unmatched and well-appreciated, so thank you all for coming. Again, appreciate the support. But this award is really about the hard work of everybody else. You know, when you're in a leadership position and you get recognized for something like this, it's really a testament to all the hard work that everyone else has done. So, for all the educators, all the staff members, honestly, being here for, on my sixth year now, I can say that the educators and staff members here in Burroville are second to none. So, I thank you all for your hard work, for what you've been able to do over the last five years, and look forward to what we'll do together over the next five years and more, hopefully. The school committee has been exceptionally supportive, so I thank you for everything, and really hoping, over the next phase of my career, to continue building and maintaining strong relationships with our members of the school committee and town council, some of which are here today. I appreciate their support, and of course, Colonel Lynch, who supported the Burroville Police Department, is unmatched anywhere in the state, and the collaboration between the schools and the police is well-appreciated. Just want to call out Dr. Pallata, who, my predecessor here, and a previous Superintendent of the Year. I don't want to get the Year wrong, but it's somewhere around 2009-ish, maybe. But, thank you for being here. So, again, it's really a testament to the hard work and dedication of everyone else. But it does make me think back on some life lessons that I learned, really, from my parents. My dad, who was retired fireman in Providence, and my mom, really instilled in all of us as children the work ethic and a commitment to public service. My dad, as a fireman, went back to school and got his degree at Providence College, so really, education and public service were the two areas that they really fostered a strong belief in all of their kids. And it's evident in not just my profession and career, but in that of my brother and my sisters. My brother, who is Detective Sergeant in the Providence Police, going on 30 years. My brother Vinnie, who's here tonight with his fiance. My sister Dawn, who's been an educator in the Providence school system for a lot of years, I won't say how many, she'll get mad at me, but we worked together for over a decade at Mount Pleasant, and she still is the head of the teacher academy there. And my sister Lisa, who went back to school after having a successful business for many years, to get her teaching credentials as a career in tech educator. Lots of nieces and nephews that are involved in public life and public service, so really a testament to my mom and dad and what they've instilled in us. So, thank you, guys, for being here. That's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
We're not quite finished with you. So, at this time, I'd like to ask our town council president, Don Fox, to come forward to say a few words.
First, thank you to the school committee for allowing me to say a few words today. I'm going to keep them brief. We're going to stick to the autobiography and accomplishments when we pull up a resolution at the Burroville Town Council. I do want to thank, welcome back first to Dr. Salito's family here at Burroville. Dr. Pallata, welcome back to town. Thank you for all of you folks for coming up to join us today from out of town. Just wanted to say a couple of brief words. When we, when Dr. Pallata decided to move to more southerly Climes here in Rhode Island, we were going through the process for selecting a new superintendent, and I believe the Colonel was on that committee amongst some of the Burroville School Department folks. Don Allen was with me, and we had a, we had a great task. You know, we were, we were faced with a lot of great candidates. And, you know, I remember it was the first time I sat in on a selection process like that, and it was really my joy to go through a process and to come to a conclusion where we got Dr. Salito amongst so many other qualified candidates, and I believe that Burroville's been very fortunate that we came to that decision a number of years ago. It's not an easy job, you know, between the superintendent and the town council at times, as we, you know, battle over budgets. Dr. Pallata remembers that, and it continues now. But I think, you know, the relationship has continued to get stronger over the last few years. I think Dr. Salito is well-grounded in, you know, the financial challenges that we face as a town, as well as a school committee each year with the fabulous school funding formula that we have to deal with each year. So, I just want to say again, thank you. Welcome, I'm sorry, welcome. Congratulations, on behalf of the Burroville Town Council, Dr. Salito. We're glad to have you here. Congratulations on this fantastic accomplishment. We look forward to having you here for many more years.
And finally, we'll turn it back over to our school committee chair, Sylvia St. Pierre, who has a few words to say and a presentation to make.
Thank you, Julie. And I'm sorry I didn't introduce her to you. This is Julie Mayo. She's our curriculum coordinator in the school system, and she's also a part-time, great party lady. Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here in this special evening. We're honoring Dr. Michael Salito tonight as a Superintendent of the Year in Rhode Island, as a, I'm sorry, and in our schools and town in Burroville. Dr. Salito has been a wonderful addition to our school community, and we're very lucky to have him. Some qualities that a great leader such as Dr. Salito shows us includes: he adheres to accountability, he communicates with transparency, he encourages innovation, and he solves conflicts with grace and integrity. And I'm a witness of that especially. Thanks to doctors, I'm sorry, thanks to Superintendent Salito, Burroville has nine approved education CTE pathways up and running. Our middle school outdoor classroom is being created. School safety projects in our schools have been and continue to be upgraded. We have a Burroville Public Schools website with a weekly community newsletter. A new football field with artificial turf and lights is in the works. There's a new media center at AT Levy School, our early, early elementary school. Upgrades and renovations in our buildings, such as new roofs and new gym floors, continue to be accomplished. New high-quality English language arts and math curriculums have been instituted, and lots and lots of grants have been awarded. Superintendent Salito has made great things happen in our schools and consequently, our community. We wish you well-deserved congratulations from the Burroville School Committee. Doc. Come on down. And I hope I don't cry when I read this. In honor of Dr. Michael Salito, 2024 Superintendent of the Year, the challenge of leadership is to be strong but not rude, be kind but not weak, be bold but not bully, be thoughtful but not lazy, be humble but not timid, be proud but not arrogant, have humor but without folly. And this was written by Jim Roan. With heartfelt congratulations from the Burroville School Department.
Thanks, Sylvia. Thank you. We'll sit down. I just, before we, before we break, just want to take a moment to thank and recognize all the building administrators that are here, and special thanks to my, my team, my central office team, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, or as we say, the CIA Director, Julie Mayo, who's here, our Director of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Dave Alba, our Facilities Director, Bill Robinson, Bill's here somewhere, Robin Commishen, who's the 2023 Rhode Island School Business Official of the Year, our Director of Technology, Justin Allen, and you've seen Maria Lawrence around here taking pitches and snaps. She's our Director of Strategic Initiatives, and she's responsible for a lot of the great promotion that you see around town of the schools. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank my, my team. We work so closely together on a daily basis. So, again, thank you, everyone. Much appreciated.
Okay, and we can break for a little break.
Okay, we are back to the Breville School Committee meeting, September 12, 2022, 23, I'm sorry. And now we're conducting the rest of our meeting. And right now, we have consent agenda, approval of minutes, warrants and invoices and bids. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 8, 2023 executive meeting, also the August 8, 2023 regular meeting and the September 6, 2023 policy subcommittee meeting.
Second? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All together? The next, did you do the warrants and invoices? Not yet, right?
Not yet.
Okay, well, on to warrants and invoices.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 23, 24 school warrant number two for the month of August dated September 12, 2023. Grand total expenditures, one million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand fifty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second again by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
And the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Superintendent of the hour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items on my report tonight, starting with a new teacher orientation which was held in late August. As you know, we have 20 new teachers in the district this year and 15 attended the voluntary orientation day. On the agenda was various items such as technology needs, hiring paperwork, sky word, safety protocols, and of course, the highlight of the day, a tour of Barville. Just want to give a shout out and kudos to Julie Mayeau for organizing the event and leading the tour of Barville as well. Really was a great way to welcome new teachers to the school system, get to know them a bit. We had all positions filled for the first day of school. Unfortunately, we had a few last minute resignations. Currently, we have three openings. We have an elementary classroom teacher, a middle school elective teacher and a high school science position. All those positions are posted and we hope to have these filled within the next week or so. Of those three positions, the classroom teacher position won't be vacant until early October, so we have a little bit of transition time. The middle school elective teacher and high school science position are open right now, but we do have some strong candidates for that science position. Again, hoping to get people in those positions in the next week or so. We'll keep you updated as that develops. Next, we had a policy subcommittee meeting which was held on September 6. We reviewed and revised the public records request policy to allow for email requests. This was due to a change in state regs. We also discussed a food service procurement policy. This is a new policy that was created by legal counsel to align with USDA regulations. Both policies are on the agenda for a first reading tonight, so I wanted to mention them both prior to that first reading. And we also discussed at the policy subcommittee level, the wellness policy. And we decided to forward that policy to the Health and Wellness Committee for review and possible revision. So that will be going to the Health and Wellness Committee in the next week or two and we'll be following up with our first Health and Wellness Committee meeting in the coming weeks as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Salido. Can I?
Okay, we are back to the Burville School Committee meeting, September twelfth, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, I'm sorry. And now we're con- conducting the rest of our meeting. And right now, we have consent agenda, approval of minutes, warrants and invoices, and bids. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August eighth, twenty twenty-three executive meeting, also the August eighth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, and the September sixth, twenty twenty-three policy subcommittee meeting.
Second? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All together. The next, did you do the warrants and invoices? Not yet, right?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, we're on to warrants and invoices.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four school warrant number two for the month of August dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Grand total expenditures, one million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand fifty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, and the last thing in number five is bids.
No bids tonight, no bids.
No bids, so we'll go on. Presentation by the public to the school committee. And having none, we're going to move on, public comment. Moving on. Personnel, leaves of absences, retirements, resignations, and appointments.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the resignations of the following. Caitlin Chunis, that's one-to-one RN, effective August ninth, twenty twenty-three. Kristen Donahue, grade two teacher, Steer Farm Elementary, effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Roland Lavelle, science teacher, Burville High School, effective September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Pearl, Paul Turcot, custodian, first shift, Burville High School, effective September first, twenty twenty-three. Lindsay Lacy, STEM exploratory, Burville Middle School, effective September first, twenty twenty-three, and Nicole Augur, grade four teacher, William L. Callahan, effective October fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second? Second is Jill?
Jill.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The next thing is old business, fiscal year twenty-
Make a motion to receive and file the subsequent appointments.
Thank you. Second? And a second for Jill? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All set? We're up to number nine, old business, fiscal year twenty-four, Burville School Department budget update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next thing is fiscal year twenty-four ring budget update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Second again by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the superintendent's report. Superintendent of the hour.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, just a few items on my report tonight, starting with a new teacher orientation, which was held in late August. As you know, we have twenty new teachers in the district this year, and fifteen attended the voluntary orientation day. On the agenda was various items such as technology needs, hiring paperwork, skyword, safety protocols, and of course, the highlight of the day, a tour of Barville. Just want to give a shout out and kudos to Julie Mayhew for organizing the event and leading the tour of Barville as well. Really was a great way to welcome new teachers to the school system, get to know them a bit. We had all positions filled for the first day of school. Unfortunately, we had a few last-minute resignations. Currently, we have three openings, we have an elementary classroom teacher, a middle school elective teacher, and a high school science position. All those positions are posted, and we hope to have these filled within the next week or so. Of those three positions, the classroom teacher position won't be vacant until early October, so we have a little bit of transition time. The middle school elective teacher and high school science position are open right now, but we do have some strong candidates for that science position. Again, hoping to get people in those positions in the next week or so.
Thank you.
Keep you updated as that develops. Next, we had a policy subcommittee meeting, which was held on September sixth. We reviewed and revised the public records request policy to allow for email requests. This was due to a change in state regs. We also discussed a food service procurement policy. This is a new policy that was created by legal counsel to align with USDA regulations. Both policies are on the agenda for a first reading tonight, so I wanted to mention them both prior to that first reading. And we also discussed at the policy subcommittee level, the wellness policy. And we decided to forward that policy to the Health and Wellness Committee for review and possible revision. So that will be going to the Health and Wellness Committee in the next week or two, and we'll be following up with our first Health and Wellness Committee meeting in the coming weeks as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Celito. Can I add, ask Jill a question? Will you need more people on that subcommittee?
Um, I had a, we had a great turnout at the last meeting, so-
Oh, good. Are you good?
I think we're good for now, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eleven, administrator's report, and we're suspending that. Number twelve, report of school committee's subcommittees. Shall we suspend that and talk about it when we get down to pending issues, subcommittee responsibilities? Or does anyone have anything to say right now?
The B-PAC meeting was postponed to tomorrow night, so I don't have any, they don't have something else.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that. The next thing is correspondence communications. I do have one thing, it is from, who is it from? It's from Vicki Martin. It's training for the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, it's going to be held November first, twenty twenty-three, at seven P.M. And I'll read it to you right now. I sent this email out a little while back and received requests for an in-person training. I've scheduled a training as follows. Wednesday, November first, twenty twenty-three, at seven P.M. in the Burville Municipal Courtroom at the Wally Lee's Public Safety Complex. And that is on Victory Highway in Oakland. She said I originally said that this was the same training that's offered annually by the Attorney General's Office about open meetings and public records, but this is different. This will be about the Rhode Island Code of Ethics, and then she gave us some information on their website. Newly sworn board members get a, get a copy of the code. The training and the question and answers takes about an hour. And it says, please send this to your staff or board members and reply to this email you're, you're intent to attend. I'd like to head count, I'd like a head count by Monday, October thirtieth. So we do have at least a month to think about it. Um, I, I believe that you must have also had ex, uh, this email must have already got to you, so just think about it.
I did forward that email to the full community earlier this afternoon.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Sounds pretty good, ethics is always a big deal. And there actually is a training session at the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, they have about nine training sessions that, on tape, and one of them is about ethics. So, this would be, especially if it's in person, it'd be nice to go to. Okay, the next thing is new business, homeschool applications, and we have none.
Yeah, we do.
Right?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do. Okay, do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a, a motion to approve the homeschool applications as presented.
Second?
Second is by Sean. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. The overnight field trip to Maine Festival of Champions in Belfast, Maine.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve that trip.
Second. Second by Terry?
Yep.
Okay, does anyone have discussion on that?
Is that cross, cross-country?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Heck of a place to run.
Yeah.
They take that trip every year, it's an annual trip.
Okay, shall we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next-
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask if we table the next item on the new business.
That's true. Discussion vote, stage two application, that one?
I'll make that motion.
Nope, the next one, the prior one.
Before that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to table.
Okay, okay. All right, that is already, we're tabling? Or are we just not?
Can table it for now.
Okay.
There's no reason to look for it, just table it.
Do we have another, um-
Sean seconded.
Second by Sean? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next one is discussion vote, stage two application to the School Building Authority regarding proposed school construction projects.
I can give you a little background on this if you'd like, prior to a motion, or we can wait till a motion and do it during discussion, whatever your pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to open discussion.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry.
Okay, so tomorrow night's a town council meeting, and what we're presenting to the town council, you, you have in front of you in your packet tonight. In short, it's a commitment to fund capital improvement projects at all five school buildings over the next five-year period. This is a, a stage two necessity of construction application that's due to the Department of Education by September fifteenth. So in order to be eligible for reimbursement for capital improvement projects, we have to have a commitment to fund by the town council and approval from the school committee. So we have a, in front of you, the item is asking for your approval. Then I'll be presenting again tomorrow night to the town council, asking for a commitment to fund. As you can see from the materials, the backup materials, it's a substantial amount of money and a significant amount of work totaling over the five-year period of six and a half million dollars. Commitment to fund by the council does not necessarily mean that they will fund all of these projects at the given prices, but it does mean that they're going to make a good faith effort to, within their budgetary restrictions, fund these projects based on the priority and, and the need. So, again, I'll be presenting this tomorrow, hopefully this gets approved tonight by the school committee, approved by the town council tomorrow. We can send it off to the Department of Education. There are projects at all five schools. The reason for that is once we get approval of, of stage two, if we move on to the actual construction projects, stage three, and get some projects up and running, and we have any cost savings, or if there's something that, that comes up that we need to do at any building, we want to make sure that we can move money around as needed. So, we have a project at every building that would qualify us, that would allow us to be qualified to move projects around in each building. So that's the, the reason that all five buildings are on there. Some projects are a lot more timely than others. For example, the, the boilers at Steer Farm is probably our most urgent need right now, followed by some roofwork at Callahan. Original roof on the old part of the building is still there. So, those two projects are really must-dos over the next year or two, and the rest of the projects we can prioritize based on budgetary constraints. So I'll, I'll be presenting this tomorrow night, Robert and I will be there answering some questions from the council. As you know, we get a reimbursement, our reimbursement rate is right around forty-seven percent right now, and we may be able to qualify for an additional ten percent in, in aid based on certain bonuses. But we are not eligible for reimbursement if we don't get the stage two, voted on, approved, completed, and submitted by September fifteenth.
So, Mike, can I, the question, these schematics that we have, those are those for each individual school, what we're gonna be doing at each individual school, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I just had a question, I was looking at them today, and I know I had asked you about this, I think it was last year, but I noticed on one of them, the middle school, we're doing the gym floor over? But it doesn't say what type of floor we're putting down.
So these are, these are just schematic designs at this point. Um, once you get a little more, a little closer to an actual project, then we would have some detail on what, what that would actually look like.
Okay. Okay.
So, stage one, before you, you get to stage two, stage one requires that any project that you are hoping to get approved has schematic designs from the architecture, architect and engineer. And we received eighty-one thousand dollars from the town in order to get those designs done. So what's in your packet tonight are some of those designs from Toronto Architects. So those are really rough, rough engineering and architectural designs, and what that would take.
Okay. All right.
Like to, you know, the specifics about what exactly the floor would look like.
I'm just curious as to what we're- Right.
Yeah, that, that won't be there until we get much closer to the project.
What, what kind of material they're gonna use for it down? Right, okay. Cause I know what's down there now is not the greatest.
Other, is there any more discussion? Questions? Okay. Do I get a, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Yep.
Motion to approve by Terry?
Second.
Second by Jill? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And that's so moved, yay. The next thing is first reading of the food service procurement policy.
Do you have the policy number? I'm close.
Do you need a motion to open?
No, 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 hold on, I'm, well, I'm gonna make a motion, here we go.
Just do it. Okay.
I'm sorry, um. Is the, is the policy number listed, though? Typically, we'll reference the policy number.
Oh, sorry, I don't have the number.
That's a new policy, so it does not have a number.
Number number.
Oh, it doesn't have one.
Give it a number?
It doesn't have a number yet, cause it's a new, a brand-new policy.
Okay. All right, we'll give it a number by next reading.
For the second, for the second reading, it will have a policy number.
The second reading. Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the first reading of the food service procurement policy and dispense with said reading.
Second.
Second by Jill? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get a number on the after next one.
Next thing is first revised reading of the public records request, request policy. And that one is? P eight, P eighty-one hundred.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the revised reading of the public records request policy, P eight-one-zero-zero, and dispense with said reading.
I, I just have one quick question on this, um, we're, we're gonna be allowing requests by email now?
Correct.
Should we, should we include an email, email address on them, or? Or would they consent?
Oh, this is just the po, this is the policy.
This is, this is the policy, but they can, I, I think the actual, um-
Is how is, how is somebody gonna know where to email them?
I think it's number four. The website is listed right there. You want to be sure that you're provided-
Oh, okay, all right.
You go to that website, and then-
Oh, I thought, I thought it was to a specific person.
It's the only change. It is to the business manager.
It goes to you?
We don't wanna name someone by name, so we'd rather put the position, because if there's a change in employees, then you have to change the policy.
She ain't go nowhere.
Well, she'll be, at some point, she's gonna retire. No time soon.
No, no, no.
No, we're not gonna let that happen.
Okay, all right. Okay, I need a second?
I have another question. Dr. Celito, it doesn't mention in here, cause I've been through quite a few of these, and some of them are, involve a lot of discovery and time. Is there, is there another spot where there might be something mentioned of a cost to the requister? So like if it's up and above, you know, four hours' worth of research, hand materials, copies, that sort of stuff?
I think there was one.
I believe that's- I believe that's right in the state law, the general law.
Yes.
Okay. Right on the regs. All right.
Yeah, they have to pay first and then get reimbursed.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I didn't have a sec, I haven't got a second yet. Was that second for Sean? All in favor for this?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the next thing, committee comments on agenda items. I'm gonna make a nice comment about our presentation today with our wonderful superintendent. Worked out very well. And thank you, ladies.
It was a nice night.
Very nice, did a great job, ladies.
Yeah, that was well attended, rightfully so.
Very much so, yeah.
Thank you. Well deserved.
Okay, pending issues, subcommittee responsibilities. And I did ask people to, to do some research on their subcommittee and what their duties were. I also made some copies of what the Rhode Island Association of School Committees has given us, as far as what the duties are for the school committee, and they're all there for you. I believe there is one, I'm not sure if it's here, it is here, it is in that thing. It, there is a part where it does say that no longer, we no longer do that, and that has to do with appointing personnel. So that's the only difference, I think, from everything. I also talked to the superintendent today about D E I, and we need a subcommittee on D E I, or at least a committee that will address diversity, equity, inclusion. And I think it's pretty well needed, we've had some concerns at times in past. And I do believe that the policy subcommittee, committee may need more members, because we are going to go through, which we are late to be doing, but we're going to go, we need to go through our policies to make sure that we're still doing them, to make sure they're still effective, and to let them go if they're not effective. Um, is that it? I think that's it.
I'll get working on establishing the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee this week. We already have some things in the, going on at the district level that we tie in nicely to that, so that, that won't be a heavy lift at all.
Okay, so we should have, do you think it's a good idea to have a policy for the subcommittee?
Uh, I think we should establish the committee first, subcommittee first, and then have maybe an initial meeting of the subcommittee before we decide if it's gonna be a policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Who is gonna head that subcommittee?
Who would like to head it? Would you like to head it, Jill?
Uh, yeah, I mean, this is what I do every night.
Jill, it's yours?
Yeah, I'll-
Okay, thank you.
And, and Dr. Celito, just a quick, um, you had mentioned you were already trying to filter through some of the policies, did you have like a, a method in mind? Like which ones you wanna kind of tackle first, or?
Uh, yes, I just unleashed Christina on it, and she's been going through the policies pretty much every day.
Thank you, Christina, yes, I'm glad you're doing it, I'm overwhelmed.
That is, uh, that's our, that's our official strategy right now.
Okay, okay.
So she's a, she's making a list in an Excel file of the policies that need to be revised based on date.
Well, I like that, okay, yeah.
And we'll look at, we'll look at the oldest policies that need revision, and the, obviously, the ones that have been reviewed in the last year or two, you know, we can hold off on. But we do have some policies that go back to two thousand, two thousand and one.
Yeah, right, and how do you eat elephant? One bite at a time.
Exactly, exactly.
Just, you feed, you feed me the little bites, and then I know what, you know, I can make some contributions that way.
Once we go through all the policies, get the list, I think we can prioritize which ones need to be reviewed and revised, and kind of go from there and chip away at it.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, fair enough, yeah, we might need some help with that, Sylvia.
Ooh, real lot of help.
Um, I also was look, when I was looking through the, the videos that the Rhode Island Association of School Committee has offered for us to look at, there was one point where Tom, Tim, sorry, Tim Duffy mentioned that Lincoln School System has a great, has a great policy, well, I don't know what you call it, but has great policies, and it's something that he said we should look at. So, and I did look at them, they do seem to be very readable. Um, they're just a different format, but I'm not sure if we need to change the, our format or not. Um, but they're easy, if you're looking for something about a policy, it's easy to find, just by going through theirs. So it's something that maybe everyone could look at when you've spared time. And just go to Lincoln School Department policies, and you'll find it. Okay. So the next thing is alumni field update. Um, do we have to, we don't have to do anything right here, vote, we're not voting on this part, right? Just giving you information.
Uh, I believe there was a meeting at the town level regarding alumni field and possible funding sources today, I'll try to get an update on that tomorrow. I was not at that meeting, but my understanding is that they had a town-level meeting to talk about funding sources, so. I'll try to get more information and let you know as soon as I do, as soon as I can.
Does the funding seem favorable? Oh, no, we have no idea, huh? Okay, does anyone else have anything else about alumni field? So that's that, and we're gonna move on to number seventeen, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. And second by Jill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.